All right, thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, I'm going to move on to item A, public to be heard. And just two quick reminders. One is that, as always, people are also welcome to submit written comments that they might have. And then the other reminder is that with everyone on the team's platform, this might not be an issue. Well, I think it might be an issue for this meeting, just as a heads up. It's going to take a little bit of time to actually speak because once you raise your hand, Maureen and Suzanne need to find you, they need to enable your microphone, get you set up, then you can speak. So just be aware that there's going to be a little bit of a hiccup from the time you're acknowledged and recognized to speak to the moment that you actually can speak. So no fear, you know, it'll just take a second. So with that said, if there are any members of the public who wish to be heard, please raise your hand. Okay, I see Jessica Miller.
And Jessica should be all set to speak.
Great, thank you.
Angie may want to try star six to unmute if that's not working.
I'm not hearing anything. So just to confirm Jessica's microphone is enabled. Suzanne, Jessica's microphone is enabled?
Apologies, I was on mute. Um, yes. Her microphone is unmuted. She should be able to speak.
Okay, she just texted in the chat, not sure what's going on. And we can definitely give it a minute. Are there any other members of the public who wish to be heard? Okay, Jessica is trying back on her phone.
That would be my recommendation. If at first you don't succeed with teams, my experience has been try, try again. So try to come in, you know, by video or phone. Sometimes the second or sometimes even the third time is the charm here.
And I will say, you know, obviously Teams is a little bit clunky sometimes, but it's probably still faster than a car drive to get into our meetings.
And certainly more accessible to a broad range of folks.
So I'm wondering, while we're waiting for Jessica, I see that Jay Nichols also has his hand raised. So if everyone agrees, I'm going to let Jay go and then we'll circle back to Jessica.
You want me to go?
Yes, please.
Can you hear me, Jennifer?
I can, thank you.
Okay, I don't know if my camera's on, I guess it doesn't matter. My comments are on the open Secretary of Ed position. I know you're going to be discussing that some. AOE leadership and state level leadership is critical to the future of Vermont education. I'm really worried about our future. I'm worried about the the low number of students that we have, and I think there's a lot of things we can do to address that. But specifically on this topic, I think we stand on a precipice in which we have some students being openly discriminated against in some schools, partly because our General Assembly chose to not address the Carson V. Makin Supreme Court case that allows money to go to religious schools and other private schools that discriminate. Whoever the next secretary is needs to be someone who is committed to each and every student, regardless of their social class, religion, gender identity, or any of those things. By working collectively in the quest to collectively serve all students, regardless of their background and equitable manner, we can truly become the educational state that I think we all want. The opportunity is great, the challenges are significant, and having the right person in that position is paramount. We need a pragmatic and inspiring leader, both at this time, more than any time in my career from my perspective. The field is begging for leadership, and it ideally should come from the AOE's top leader or leaders. Please try to keep this in mind as you go, as you do this important work. Thank you. Oh, and I'm the executive director of the Vermont Principals Association. Sorry for not identifying myself.
Thank you, Jay. And again, feel free to submit your comments in writing, and they can be included as a link in the minutes. So Jessica is back in, and she was wondering how to raise her hand, and I just indicated star five to raise your hand.
Or it's star five to raise your hand and star six to unmute.
So Suzanne, just to confirm, are you seeing that Jessica is enabled to speak? And I don't know, Suzanne, if you're muted, but I can't hear you.
I did it again. She is enabled, she should be able to speak. Unfortunately, I can't unmute people. I can only put them on mute.
Okay.
And I did make her a presenter, so she may be able to speak through her computer as well.
Okay, thank you. So I'm, I think Jessica, you may still be having problems, and to Tammy's point, if you want to drop out and come back in, you know, maybe the third time is the charm. I'm going to leave public comment open, but I think what I'd like to do is move ahead to the next item on our agenda, and then we'll circle back and see if we have more success. So with that, I'm going to temporarily temporarily move forward and pick up item B, which is a motion to approve our draft meeting minutes from August 9th, 2023. Is there a motion? It's been moved by Kim. Is there a second? Seconded by Tammy. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving our meeting minutes from August 9th, 2023, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Hearing none, are there any extensions? Okay, the motion has carried unanimously, and you've adopted the minutes from our August 9th, 2023 meeting. I will now entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from our special meeting of August 18th, 2023. It's been moved by Tom, seconded by Tammy. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving our meeting minutes from our special meeting of August 18th, 2023, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Hearing none, are there any extensions?
Staying, I wasn't there.
Okay, thank you. So Lyle's abstaining. And the motion has carried with one extension by Lyle. Thank you. Let me return back to public comment. I thought I saw Jessica. And now I'm not seeing her. Oh, maybe she is here. Jessica, are you with us? Okay, I'm going to leave public comment open a little bit more, and we're going to move on to board announcements. If there are any board announcements, I have a couple. So my first announcement is that Act 72 of 2021, which is entitled "An Act Relating to Addressing the Needs and Conditions of Public School Facilities in the State", requires the Secretary of Education in consultation with the Chair to update school construction facility standards and for the Board to adopt a revised capital outlay financing formula. Tammy and I met with Cassandra Ryan and Bob Donahue, who was the agency's consultant last month, and absent objection, I would like to name Rich Warner and Tammy to pick up where Tammy and I left off and work with the agency to update the school construction facility standards. Not hearing any objection. Thank you. So Tammy and Rich carry on. And then my second announcement is at the beginning of this month, Lindsay Hedges, who's from the agency's policy, she is the agency's policy communication specialist, reached out to me to invite the Board to participate in a series of stakeholder engagement meetings that are aimed at capturing feedback and fostering a meaningful conversation regarding Act 29 of 2023, which is the School Safety Act. And again, I asked Rich if he would be interested in representing the Board in this capacity, and he's agreed. So absent any objection from the Board, I would like him to represent the Board at the stakeholder meetings. Rich has a background, I think you were a police officer in a former life, maybe, Rich?
I was.
So I thought your perspective would be helpful. So thank you. And we will look for updates on both of these at future meetings.
We actually had the first meeting yesterday, and it was introductory in what was happening. I'm not sure when the next meeting is. They were taught, they did a doodle poll, but I'll have whatever material we get, I'll send to you so you can put it up for review.
Great. So yes, if you can send that to Maureen and Suzanne, and then we can include that in any other materials, if you have any additional meetings between now and our next board meeting, we can include that in the agenda packet.
Will do.
Thank you. Any other board announcements? Okay, not hearing any. And I'm not seeing Jessica Miller at all. Oh, oh, she just raised her hand. So I'm going to conclude Agenda Item C. We're going to go back to public comment, and Jessica, if you are able to speak, you may address the Board. I thought that I heard Jessica, but now I'm not hearing anything. I see her video. It looks like she's trying to come on in video.
Okay.
So she says her mic is still not working. Jessica, I'm assuming you're able to hear us, and I'm really sorry for the problems that you're having. The Board definitely wants to hear with you. Hear from you.
And she tried calling in, did you try calling in using your phone, Jessica? And not use your mic on your computer? If you don't have a number, we can put that in the chat. Didn't work when I did press star six. Would it be star six coming in on the phone or star?
Star five. Yes, excuse me, chair.
Jessica, I'm wondering too, we do have public comment again at the end of the meeting, and I'm sure you have, you know, a full day ahead of you. Would you be able to submit your comments in writing, and they can be read into? We can read them when we get to the second public comment section at the end of our meeting. And if you're able to join us, that would be terrific, but if you are able to, you know, send an email to Maureen or Suzanne, then we can read your the meeting at the end. Okay, so Jessica says, okay, thank you. And I'm really, really sorry that you're having these problems. That's, I'm sure it's really frustrating, and we definitely want to hear what you have to say, so I appreciate your flexibility. Okay, so I'm closing public comment, and we're going to move on to the students' report. So we have Aleah and Gray. I'm not sure which one of you wants to go first. So and just because I think this is the first student report for both Aleah and Gray. These are typically just kind of informal check-ins so that the Board has an understanding of, you know, what your school experience is like, and, you know, for as long as, you know, I've been on the Board, every student is different, you know. There are different things going on at different schools, and each student has different interests and activities. So it's just a chance for you to, like, give the Board a glimpse into, you know, your school life and, you know, what's going on, for better or for worse.
Um, I can start if you'd like me to. Um, yeah, I mean, I obviously have not done a student report before, but school for all of us started not too long ago, just right at the end of August. So not a lot has happened yet. Obviously, all sports teams have started. I run cross-country myself, and all of our first meets for that has started. Um, as far as major events, uh, homecoming is coming up. That's just this weekend, so we have a homecoming parade that's this Friday, then a bonfire, and then an actual dance. And then our school celebrates Peace One Day, which is this Thursday, so that's a whole chunk of our day for that presentation, which is always a pretty big deal at our school. Our school has lots of new policies this year, so that's kind of been the thing at school. We have very strict no-phone policies now. Whenever, which is, I mean, we're never supposed to have our phones in classrooms, but now it's, in theory, there are very harsh rules on penalties if phones are used at all, and teachers aren't even allowed to instruct us to use our phones. And teachers aren't allowed to use our phones, which is sometimes difficult because, you know, in in physics, we want to time something, and we all want to individually time things, but we're technically not allowed to use our phones at all or take a picture of our experiments. So we need, he needs to find us, technically, we need to find us all cameras and then all stopwatches. And so it's, they're not rules that everyone is totally happy about. And we also have very strict rules on where people can go, like during the lunchroom now. All of the teachers have to take turns being kind of like hall monitors just around the lunchroom so that people can't get out, which no one is less psyched about than the teachers, who do not like having to stand in the halls. Um, and yeah, that's kind of, oh, well, the other thing is that I'm not actually, I take Spanish for my language, not German, but for all the German kids, our exchange program with the school in Germany is happening. So there's like 20 German kids at our school right now, and they're all moving through the school. And it's, you know, I go to Virgens, which I didn't say I should say. But not a very big school, so 20 people makes a large difference on the amount of people there. But, yeah.
Is there also a Spanish exchange program? Does that happen at a different time?
Uh, not really. There is a Costa Rica trip that happens sometimes, but the the Spanish program at our school, there's only those two options, we don't have French anymore, is a lot less developed because our German program, it's very specific, we have connections with another school. One of my best friends is doing a full-year exchange student program thing in Germany. Spanish, we also don't speak Spanish as well. Our Spanish class is not generally very successful compared to our German class, so we sadly do not do as much, and I should have taken German. That's okay.
So and can you explain the the event on Thursday, the one, whatever?
Peace One Day?
Yeah.
So Peace One Day is, you know, it's a major holiday, so we take, it's not all of the day, but we have like half-hour classes, and then it's a large outdoor celebration, and it's something our school does every year. Those of you who don't know, Peace One Day is the idea that it's, should be one day off of all violence and all war and everything to focus on peace and the future of the world. And so we go outside and into our fields, and there's usually lots of speakers. I know we have a keynote speaker this year, and there's usually, lots of students are involved. I know Chorus usually does something. I know the band is playing a marching band version of "Don't Stop Believing", which I'm a part of. And, you know, there's just, it's usually a fun event. It's always, there's always pies there, and people sell pies for charities, people buy pies, and so, yeah, that's a big thing at our school.
Nice, it's a good tradition. Any other comments or questions for Gray? All right. Well, great. Thank you very much for your report. That was, you know, a nice taste of life at Virgens, because I've, you know, I have, actually, we do need to visit, and I think the plan is we usually visit our student-member schools during their senior year, so we can look forward to a trip up to Virgens next year. Thank you. Aleah, do you want to update the Board?
Yeah, sure. Just a quick announcement, like I'm coming up with a cold here, so just bear with me. If I lose my voice, it's been in and out. So I go to North Country and up in Newport. And honestly, I would say like gray, like there's nothing really going on. It's the first couple of weeks of school. Everyone's still getting, I wouldn't say settled in, but like we're kind of starting to get into the routine of things. I play volleyball at LI, so I do a 45-minute drive every day for practice. And so I don't have a fourth period, so I'm not really in school as much as I normally would be. But, yeah, there's nothing really going on. Last year, we had like the strict phone rule, and then our principal this year was like, we're not doing it, but just understand like it's the teacher's opinion and like whether or not they want the phones in their class or not. But our principal does want 100% graduation rate from here on out. So it's kind of, there's like changes being made within our, do you guys use Power School, Gray? Yeah, so Power School is like the program we use to like see our grades and where teachers can put our grades in and things like that. And so there's new updates to it, but it's not really working, and so everyone is just frustrated about it. It's down every day, and then it gets, it goes back up and running for like one second, and then it just, it doesn't work. So I'm hoping to see some changes with that because it's just, like, it's just frustrating for everyone. Yeah, other than that, I just, I play volleyball and I go to school. I'm taking French, and I have an exchange student this year. So I have an exchange sister. But yeah, other than that, there's nothing really going on up in North Country.
So is your exchange student for the whole year?
She's going to be here for 10 months. So, yeah, basically.
Wow. Um, that's really nice. Do you guys, or do you speak French together? Do you speak English together, or some of both?
We speak English. She's from Spain. She's from Barcelona. Yeah, but we're teaching her French, so. Yeah.
Um, and how long is your volleyball season?
Volleyball is until like October-ish. I don't know if it's going to overlap with basketball, but I think it ends in October sometime.
So are you missing class to drive to practice and then come back again?
No, so I specifically made my schedule to not have fourth periods so that I can go to practices and to games.
Okay, so that's like your last class of the day?
So, right, and then we have like this 45-minute period at the end of the day where we can like meet with any teacher that we need to to get extra help and support. And I'm missing that, which is unfortunate because it would be very beneficial, but, you know. It's okay.
It's a lot of determination. Well, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments for Aleah? All right. Well, hearing none, thank you both so much for, you know, sharing with us, and we look forward to hearing more about your years, the months go on. Thank you. Okay, so now I'm going to turn to the Secretary Search Committee update. And this is just a reminder that pursuant to three VSA Section 2702, the Board is charged with proposing no fewer than three candidates for Secretary of Education to the Governor. From there, the Governor will make the appointment of the Secretary with the advice and consent of the Senate. So last month at our meeting, the Board formed a Secretary Search Committee comprised of Lyle, Jenna, and me, and we've met twice since then. At our first meeting, we invited Beth, I'm sorry, Beth Festigi and Keisha Pollard from the Department of Human Resources to really help us understand how to craft the job description as well as the support that they could provide to us in terms of editing and posting. And then we met a second time to work on the job overview, description, and preferred qualifications. We then asked the Office of Racial Equity to provide feedback, which we received, incorporated some recommendations from that office, and then we posted the job description last Wednesday. It has been posted in Ed Week, Indeed, and School Spring, and there should be a press release coming out, I think from Ted Fisher at some point pretty soon. So we, the position is being posted until October 5th, and then the committee will be meeting tomorrow from 1:00 to 2:30 to discuss potential interview topics. So that is the update from the Secretary Search Committee. I don't know if there are any questions or comments on that. Kim? And let me just say too, I recognize that Heather is in the meeting with us, and I don't know if Heather's applying or not, but I just, you know, sort of high-level procedural questions, I think are completely fair, but I just wanted to mention that before we have any conversation.
Yeah, I was just checking. I recalled Tammy inquiring about a broader national search potential or the support of an outside body to conduct that type of a search within the level of the positions.
Yeah, we did discuss that with DHR, and two things, I mean, one is we don't have a budget to support that, and two, they felt that they could do a really good job helping to push out the listing in School Spring and Indeed, and they thought that that was probably, that that would meet the Board's needs and was in line with past Secretary searches. So that's ultimately what we decided to do.
And will they then, I'm just thinking, vetting references and things like that?
So we've asked for applicants to submit a cover letter, resume, and three references. This is an undecided question, but I think it might be the Governor's Office that would do the reference checks once we, you know, as a committee and then the full Board make the recommendation of the finalists. Again, because it's something that the Governor's Office, I think, has greater capacity to do, and it's going to be something that's going to be more personal to the Governor at that point.
After the, I'm just wondering what our, our end of the responsibility would be in before we've moved three candidates. So before, it's the Governor's decision, just thinking about the process to ensure we've moved three qualified candidates. So I just, I put that out there. I know your committee will have to figure that out. And then just because I'm not particularly familiar with this level of search, though I've been involved with two superintendent hires, the timeline seemed rather short. The timeline seemed rather short to me, but perhaps I am mistaken or perhaps our process is starting late. Generally because it took a while for us to begin on, um, the opening from March. So I don't know if there's a particular timeline that aligns better. It like in a superintendency, you'd want to get somebody in and committed when their contract period is open. I don't know to what extent that's similar here. It just seemed like a short timeline, like less than three weeks, I think, from posting.
Yeah, it's like three weeks. But, um, that was what DHR had recommended, you know, and we can always extend the listing, you know, depending on if we're, you know, getting any applications or not. Um, but it was also kind of, you know, if I think about the governor's original letter where, um, you know, the government, governor mentioned eight weeks. You know, that tells me that the governor wasn't anticipating, um, a terribly long timeframe for the, um, position to be posted. So DHR seemed to think that that was appropriate. Um, and again, you know, we can always extend it if we need to. Thank you. Um, Tammy?
I was gonna suggest, I know Ed Week is, is certainly a good venue, but I'm also curious about CCCSO. AAS, there is some of these other national organizations where, you know, a well-placed letter to them asking them to circulate the posting through their networks would probably be helpful for generating a list of candidates as well. But I'm happy, I'm happy to think through with you, with, with the subcommittee, some of those organizations, but I think
Well, and I think
out there would be helpful.
Jenna may not be on the call yet, but Lyle, my recollection is that posting it in School Spring also pushed it out to CCSO. And I forget Tammy, the other one that you said. I can double check on that, but I thought.
AAS.
Yeah, that's correct. I think it gets pushed out to all of those, but it is worth checking.
Okay.
Yeah, I think sometimes certainly they get pushed out, but that ends up at the bottom of the email box. Sometimes a well-positioned quick note to someone with an attachment gets it elevated to the point where they might circulate in a focused or targeted way.
Okay. Um, so Tammy, our next meeting is tomorrow at one. Um, and I think if you want to follow up, I mean, if, if you have anything that you want to follow up, um, I can, you know, send that to DHR and see if they can, um, you know, push it. So, um, Jen, I see that you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I was just gonna add what Lyle added, but Tammy, I think that's a great idea. And I also wonder though, is there other fees? Because I think when we had the conversation to like move the posting to the top or to like promote it, there was additional costs.
I was suggesting using personal networks, right? So you know, send it to a person there and say, hey, do you, if you know of candidates, could you send this out? I think that oftentimes is how things filter to the right people, right? Because people know people who are thinking about those things or people know, know people who would be a good fit. And so if you send a note to someone at CCSO, it says, you know, we have this posting open. We really appreciate that you would forward it along. Just people that you think are particularly good candidate. We do that in academia a lot, right? Where, you know, the posting, we send emails out to people we know. Encouraging them to sort of identify people and pass it on. It's just, it typically is a pretty good strategy for being more focused and targeted and getting good candidates.
I guess I would also say that we're hiring for the highest level of position in the state with respect to education. So if there are some costs to ensure that the reach happens at the level it should, um, I would think our budget, we never go over budget and we've got budget space to, um, I don't, I don't know if that falls under promotions or I don't remember our budget categories. I'm sure it's probably in our package somewhere, but um, I would encourage that we, um, ensure that we've had the reach that would be appropriate for a position of this level.
Yeah. And so we, we have incurred cost with the postings, just so we're clear. Um, there has been a cost associated, which will show up on our, um, budget form. But yeah, I hear what you're saying. I, I guess, you know, my thought was that DHR felt comfortable with the strategy that they recommended to us. Um, and I think, you know, Tammy's suggestion about, you know, pointed follow-up emails, um, would be a good tag on, um, with no cost. Any other questions or comments? Alrighty. Well, thank you guys for your suggestions and this was a good conversation. Moving on to the Rule Series twenty two hundred committee update. We were scheduled to meet with ICAR at its monthly meeting on September eleventh, um, but there were ten entities that were scheduled to appear. Um, it was a two-hour meeting. The first entity took an hour and ten minutes. And then they made it through four more and then they adjourned the meeting. So we are now, um, scheduled to appear before ICAR on October ninth. I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments about that. All right. Hearing none, um, I will turn it over to Tammy or Kim for a Rule Series two thousand committee update.
Thanks. Thanks. I'm just pulling up my notes real quick. So, um, the EQS continues to wind its way through all of the checks that it needs to go through. Um, and just as a reminder to everyone, um, you know, in April of twenty twenty two, the State Board received recommendations for the EQS from the Act One Working Group. In May of twenty twenty two, the EQS Rules Update Committee, we began our work on that. And in May of twenty twenty three, the board approved a draft to be filed with ICAR. And at that time, we established three public hearings and a formal comment period. The dates of those hearings have posted on the AOE website and we had our first one on September thirteenth from six thirty to eight PM. There are fifteen people who registered comments with some people speaking more than once. Um, we have two additional public hearings coming up, one on Tuesday, I mean, one on Thursday, September twenty eighth from eleven thirty to one. We're trying to again vary the times, um, and dates. So they're not all on Tuesdays. They're not all in the evenings. Um, and then we have a third one on Tuesday, October third from six thirty to eight PM. The deadline for public comment, um, will be Sunday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty three. Public comment is going to, um, AOE and is being posted on the webpage. And with the assistance of our attorney, we're, we will collate all those comments and then the EQS Subcommittee will work through those comments and come up with responses. The goal is to have any revisions to the EQS document their result from public comment back to the, the board for its first look as a November meeting. And then we can sort of determine from there sort of when to schedule the meeting, uh, vote on those sort of any revisions that we may have. Again, the goal is to try to keep the revisions to the twenty two hundred series and the two thousand series in, in the EQS in parallel. Uh, because this is really meant to be a lift and shift from the EQS to the twenty two hundred series. And we want to make sure that those these things are as close to being the same as humanly possible. Um, but as you know, Jennifer's meant, we, we, there was a bit of a speed bump with regard to ICAR for twenty two hundred series. So we're just gonna have to keep our eye on that and figure it out as we go. Because now because of the delay, the comment periods will not overlap as, as originally thought. And for the record, if any people are listening, public comment can be submitted on this to sbe公publiccomment@vermont.gov. And again, public comment is period closes October fifteenth. So I don't know if there's anything else you want to add. I can put, I'm also gonna put this, um, the email address for submitting public comment, um, in the chat. Kim, do you have anything else you want to add? I, I see you're on mute, but I also see you shaking your head no. So I think maybe I, maybe I covered it. Any, any quick questions from the board on, on the process where we are now?
I will say thank you for dropping the, um, the email address in the chat. I've been receiving some public comment and I don't know if Tammy and Kim, if you have. When that happens, I respond to it and then Luke, Maureen and Suzanne and so that the comment can be posted in the official housing for public comments, but, um, it's really more efficient just to, um, email directly, um, to SBE.
And I did, I did see, for example, I think Lyle, you might have received some comment as well. I, I think I would just say to the board, if you receive comments on the EQS, please don't assume that they went to everybody. Uh, and I would, it would be great if you could send them to the sbe dot publiccomment@vermont.gov just to make sure that everything gets registered. And if you, if you think of it and it's not too much trouble, if you CC Kim and Jen or myself, then we can also keep track. We really want to make sure that not, that nothing gets missed, right? And sometimes information comes in lots of different ways. So um, I would rather be redundant than having, having the same comments, you know, that may have been for, may have been sent to individual board members separately end up in sort of a common email folder where we can see that there was redundancy than with the assumption that we, so that we don't miss something.
Thank you, Tammy. I was gonna mention that and then, um, I was going to, I just noticed this morning that the, the line underneath rulemaking, rulemaking is a tab in the State Board of Ed homepage. Going there and looking for Rule Series two thousand, you'll see what was filed and those documents. The, um, line there that says public comment is not hot linked right now. So I was gonna just check in with Maureen and Suzanne to see that that, um, it might have been there waiting to be live for there to have been public comments to have been received. So um, I was just gonna circle back with you all a little bit later after the meeting. And I, so that we all understand that there's a commonplace. Um, as you were mentioning, Jennifer and Tammy, that folks are directing it in addition to the ability to see those that have been submitted. So people can see the comments that are already on the record.
So and just to make sure that I understand the process, if board members receive public comment, um, that gets forwarded to you too, as well as sbe公publiccomment@vermont.gov.
I prefer to have it forwarded to the sbe公publiccomment@vermont.gov, but if board members think of CCing all of us, that would be helpful because it just helps me. I think it helps the subcommittee track what's coming in. Um, so.
You don't need to CC Maureen and Suzanne.
No, because they, they are monitoring the sbe公publiccomment@vermont.gov.
Yes, we don't want to unnecessarily inundate them with emails.
Everybody's doing, everybody's doing their best here. Um, and we, but I, I think of this as if I'm just trying to make sure we have a little bit of redundancy in the system. So if it goes to, if, if individual board members receive comments, just please board it. It would be great. Lyle?
Can we just put that in our minutes so that that's posted somewhere? I guess maybe it's a question, where are we posting that? So people know how to go to sbe公publiccomment@vermont.gov.
Yeah, it's in our, it's on the website. Um, yeah, I just put in the chat and part of the reason I put it in the chat was to make sure it ended up in the minutes. Because if I put things in the chat, I think they have to end up in the minutes. So thank you for the suggestion.
Perfect. Thanks.
And again, if people, if somebody forgets and they send it to Jennifer or Kim or myself or even you, Lyle, you know, we can also sort of help with that and make sure that it gets forwarded there.
I generally forward everything to Jennifer, but I'll do whatever you suggest. So, thank you.
Thanks, everyone. So and thanks again for everybody's continued engagement with this process. Um, the public comments certainly very interesting and important. And so, you know, we would invite any board members who want to sit in and listen to comment. Again, the links are available on the website and the next two dates are coming up, um, again on September twentieth and then again on October third.
Great. Thank you. All right. So if there are no further comments, um, I will now turn it over to Heather for the secretary's update.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, happy to be here. Nice to see you all. Uh, I wanted to frame my update around a couple of topics. First, wanted the board to know that we recently released the twenty twenty two data for our annual snapshot. If you didn't see that press release that went out. Just as a reminder, our annual snapshot is what, um, we are required to report in terms of federal legislation and requirements for the Every Student Succeeds Act. So, um, our state plan has focused, um, on academic proficiency. Things like high-quality staffing, personalization, which is of course very key to our Vermont education system, safe and healthy schools, and then some investment priorities. We are still at the agency going through and, and taking a look at all the data broken down by, um, grades, broken down by different, um, historically marginalized groups. But we do have, um, some interesting patterns to share just in terms of the global, um, state performance. One of the things I wanted to note though is, um, although this is a very important, um, body of information for us to have an understanding of how students are doing and performing academically, it's not the only one. So it's, it's an important tool for us to use. Uh, it's also, um, this tool is used to develop our list every three years for schools that qualify for additional federal supports. And I can talk a little bit about that as well. But, um, I don't, I don't want to leave the impression that this is the only type of assessment that matters or that there's not also additional information that, for instance, at the local level, districts, families, um, educators should be looking at. So every district has its own local comprehensive assessment system. Part of that for all is this, um, state report card. Just wanted to clarify that. I'm happy to take any questions about that. When I'm done. So in general, I would say, um, we have been, just as a reminder, I think that I've shared this before. We have in terms of our broad state assessments, both the National Assessment of Education Progress, which is a different, um, federal assessment that is actually, um, implemented by the US Department of Education. And it has a very different, um, sampling structure. It has a very different approach than our state assessments. But both of them have shown that we are kind of, um, flat, um, with some slight decline over time, but in terms of both reading and math performance. So one of the things I wanted to note is that, um, we still are, uh, overall approaching proficiency. There's a lot of different, um, pros and cons of a proficiency approach. And, um, I'm very happy, for instance, if we want to dig into that, to have a, a much more focused and intentional conversation about, um, some of these details, um, in a, in a, um, a follow-up meeting. But, um, we are actually approaching proficiency still overall in math and English language arts and science. We are actually trending upward, um, in math, which is great. And one of the big take-home question or points though, is that we have had for a very long time gaps between historically marginalized students and nonhistorically marginalized students. And in Vermont, that's actually grouping together, um, students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. Students who are of the global majority or BIPOC, um, students who qualify for or are eligible for, um, special education services, students who are English learners. And students who, I think I said students who qualify for free and reduced hot lunch. So though, because of our size, those are all grouped together and that is how we consider our historically marginalized, um, students. And we, you know, there's a comparison between them and students who don't, who aren't in any of those categories. So, um, we have had some pretty longstanding, um, achievement gaps between that historically marginalized group and the nonhistorically marginalized group, and it's gotten bigger. And so we really do need to, um, I, I would say get very serious about how we're going to address equity in our state and how we're actually going to ensure that all students are actually showing progress and growth in basics such as their learning and their performance in math and. in basics such as their learning and their performance in math and English and science. And so it's something that I look forward to talking with folks more about. And I think, you know, I, I think the time is now, like never before, to address this. We're just coming out of COVID. A lot of, you know, a lot of, as I said, a lot of, all, these, these gaps were there before COVID and they've only gotten wider. And we anticipated that. But again, I think it's really important that we all row in the same way and really come together in terms of how best to support our local education systems, provide the supports that we can from the state so that we're all on the same page and we're all really focused on academic improvement in the context of some really tough challenges, of course. And that's really important to note. So we've got really tough challenges in terms of workforce. We've got some really tough challenges in terms of the acute nature of what many students are bringing in to the classroom in terms of behavioral challenges and related concerns. So it's all part of a very complex system. And I wouldn't want to give the impression that this is a very, you know, easy-peasy problem or an easy-peasy summary of what's going on. But it is important, I think, for us to really pay attention to. One of the positive pieces to note is that we had 13 schools out of 15 who actually exited comprehensive supports. And so what that means is that they had qualified for comprehensive supports, which the federal formula requires that to be. It is sort of the, not sort of, it is the lowest-performing 5%. And we like to frame this less around the performance issue and more around the qualification of additional supports. Because we do not, and have never in Vermont, really used these metrics as a way to be punitive to specific educators or as a way to actually, as a way to actually adopt a punitive approach to districts either. There are a lot of reasons why achievement test scores are what they are. And so we recognize that. But the good news is that the substantial majority of schools that actually were qualifying for comprehensive supports, again, it was four years ago because we had a gap in terms of testing, as you recall, through during COVID. Usually it's three years. They exited comprehensive supports, which means that they've made improvements, which means that they're no longer at that 5% bottom. And so, you know, I actually reached out personally to each of the districts and thanked them and, and let them know that, you know, that's a great achievement and, you know, bravo. Which I think is important, particularly in the context of all the challenges that I just mentioned and then also navigating COVID. One of the last things I'll say on this, and I'm sure there might be some good questions, is that, so these are data that were collected in 2022. It's the last year of Sback. I would not want to give the impression, I think the data collection and the administration of the assessment went more smoothly than 2021 because that was right smack in, in COVID, in the pandemic. But there still were some challenges. So there were, like I said, workforce challenges. You know, there has been a pretty substantial impact on students' behavior, their social-emotional learning and those kinds of issues, which are also really related to how they can actually perform on a state assessment. So it, why I'm saying that is that it makes it really tricky to actually compare year to year to year. And I just want us to, to kind of remember that as well. And then I just have a couple of other updates on largely some legislative working groups that I know Lindsay and Ted came in and talked about with you all. So there's an important working group that's focused on the student, on student protections from harassment and discrimination, which I have the opportunity and fortune to, to be able to participate in. Two areas of work that have been up for discussion and the idea is to present some recommendations to the legislature for this upcoming session are thinking about compulsory education, truancy, access to, you know, a student's, you know, right to access their public education and how that all fits in for students who have been victimized in terms of harassment, discrimination. The focus of the work group is not bullying, but for us, it's, it's a lot of the same, you know, constellation of, of bad behavior happening. So we're working on that as a working group. I think we've had some pretty robust discussions about that. At issue is for some of our folks who work day-to-day with families that have experienced harassment and discrimination, their students have, have faced harassment and discrimination, it feels really tough to have to deal with truancy as a looming issue when school feels like an unsafe place for students who have experienced harassment and discrimination. And that's, it's a very important issue for us to grapple with. On the other hand, some folks, AOE included, have also wanted to note that it's also the school and the district's responsibility to provide that safety. And so if students are not coming to school because they've been victimized, in some sense, that makes sense, but also it deprives them of their public education that they have a right to. And so, as you might imagine, this is a pretty complex, multifaceted conversation and, and where we developed a small subgroup to try and, to try and wade through this and come up with, I would say, some more common sense approach that certainly doesn't continue, you know, revictimize families by, you know, putting forth pretty brutal truancy procedures on top of everything else. We also know that our truancy statute right now is very bare bones. It, it doesn't align all that well with the DCF statute around, and I see Jenna nodding, around, you know, their, their musts and their have-tos around truancy and related statutes and, and legislation that they need to attend to. So I think this fits with a broader body of work trying, you know, that we're trying to do across different agencies at the state around chronic absenteeism that ultimately obviously leads to truancy or worse, in the worst-case scenario. So wanted to just update the board on that. And then also, another piece of this particular working group is talking about, in the employment arena, there is a severe and pervasive standard that allows for employees that have experienced discrimination and harassment to hold the employer directly accountable when there has been, it's a legal standard of severe and pervasive harassment or discrimination. And the argument would be that nothing, that the employer hasn't done anything about that. And so that would typically be adjudicated, you know, adjudicated in some kind of legal proceeding. So some folks are, are interested in and, and think it's a good idea to apply that to schools on behalf of students. And, you know, I think many of us would argue, although that's well-intentioned and we understand that, that, that schools are a different animal than, than employers. So first of all, we're, we're talking about children, students, who are engaged in the hazing, in the harassment and discrimination, which change, which is different than if we're talking about adults engaged in those behaviors, I would argue. It doesn't mean that it's less serious. But I think we have to account for the fact that we're actually, our job is to teach students. And so we want to actually make sure that we're doing a good job to educate perpetrators of bullying and harassment at the same time as we're not certainly ignoring or not addressing the impact of that behavior. So meaning on, on, on students who have, who have been victimized by that. So as you might imagine, that is also a very tricky and complicated conversation. I know many of our districts and schools are nervous about this and nervous about the possibility of increased litigation as a result of this kind of a standard put in place, which I think is something for all of us to consider and think about that would have implications across the state system, I think. Some good, maybe some not so good. So just again, I'm just, I'm just updating you on some kind of wave top themes that are, that are coming through in these, this particular working group. We also, Chair Sandelson mentioned Act 72 and the State Construction Aid and the component that the State Board of Ed is mandated to work on. And, and it's a good thing to actually update some of the standards that are in play in this space. But the broader State Construction Aid Working Group is continuing to meet as well. The next meeting is this Friday. That is still, I would say, in a stand, a stance of kind of still sort of doing some background information, making sure everyone has an understanding of what, how, you know, bonding works at the local level, what the current model is, even though it's been pretty much in hibernation for many, many years, so that we can move off from that and really build the system that we're all hoping to see. Definitely have had some outreach from folks on that working group who have some concerns about how PCB remediation and mitigation is fitting in with the broader construction aid conversation and decision-making, which is also very important. Certainly at the local level, that's, that's playing out, you know, as we speak, how to actually manage those two different bodies of work to be done, even though they're obviously very related because they're about facilities and brick and mortar in a lot of ways. And then finally, the pre-K implementation study, another legislative work group, put forth this past session. We have released an RFP to, the agency has released an RFP to, in partnership with the Child Development Division of HS, to hire, have a contract with a facilitator to actually help run the meetings and help take minutes and then also help with the report that's due. And the reason is, the co-chairs of that are myself and the director of the Child Development Division, Deputy Commissioner Janet McLaughlin. And it's been, become very clear to us that we can't both facilitate the meeting and participate. And it's something that we really need to participate in, in terms of our background and our knowledge. And so it's really important for us to be able to have that piece taken care of. And the AOE, as it always does, is providing support for, like it does for the State Board in terms of, you know, warning the meetings, processing, travel voucher, you know, travel reimbursement and those kinds of things. But it's a very light touch because we don't have capacity for five new working groups to fully facilitate all of that work as is needed. So I think that was what I wanted to focus on, and I'm probably over my time and I apologize for that. It's always hard not to get a little more chatty and excited about this for me personally. But I'm happy to take any questions.
Heather, thank you very much. That was very detailed. There's a lot of work going on, for sure. Lyle?
Yeah, thank you, Heather. Back to the testing, and I'm sure that we've talked about this before, but I'm thinking about, this is the final year for Sback, moving to a new system, thinking out loud again about data transfer and comparability. How, how will that be accomplished?
So part of our contract with the new vendor is to, to do that work. So they are actually charged with doing those pretty sophisticated analytics. So for, for Dr. Colby, it's, it's latest and greatest item response theory kind of stuff, which is way beyond my capacity now because it's been a while since I was in grad school. But so they're charged with actually making those connections directly so that we can, that's part of the contracts, that we can actually make some comparisons. I still will say, though, that we're always going to have a bit of a challenge, I would say, with truly veridical year-to-year comparison throughout those pandemic years. Because there just was so much going on in terms of the implementation that it makes it really tough, I think, to have, for me personally, and then I think many of my staff, to have full confidence that it is apples to apples to apples. But that has been baked in, and so we're gonna do our very best to make sure that we don't have glaring errors in, in that comparability that we can actually address and take care of.
And just, just a quick follow-up, if I may, Jennifer. I'm not a statistician in any way, but should we be throwing out some of those COVID years and going back further in our comparisons?
It's an interesting question. I think what, what we've done more informally when we're just looking at trends is to use school year 19 as kind of that baseline and then look at not so much trends, but like each year subsequently compared to 19, just to see what's going on. And that might be very well what, what is the best approach. But again, like we wanna, we, we wanna really rely on that expertise from the statisticians that are used to doing this in other states. I mean, this is an issue that has, you know, happened throughout the nation. And so we also don't want to be doing something, we want to kind of see what is happening at a national level around this issue too. And I think not be really out there in any kind of way that would be, that would make it even more unique and difficult to understand what's going on.
Yeah, I'm not intending that we should be a maverick, but it just seems like those two years, three years have been very difficult on schools and kids. And to spend innumerable hours rehashing, yeah, it was a problem. Just launching from a new starting point with older data might be helpful. But again, they'll figure it out.
Yeah, and that's what we've been, what's, it's what we've been doing internally to the agency when we're trying to look at, at things. But we haven't officially said that. It puts us in a weird position because we had to do the testing. We don't want to completely, I mean, I think, I think there is some utility to the testing. So we don't want to completely, I think, toss it out as though it's completely useless. I think, I think it's about care and diligence and how we interpret particularly trends. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Kim?
Thank you, and thank you, Heather. I just want to make sure to clarify that this is student data for the year that ended 2020, the school year ended June of 2022, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And so I am trying to remember, and I'm sure I would have remembered this in my former school board hat, but is this a longer delay in release of information? I, I'm feeling like I recalled when it ended in June, we would get it sometime in the fall of the same year versus this fall of the following year.
Yes, so we are now speedily working on and a little bit delayed on our school year 23 data. So what happened is because of that, because of that year when there was no testing, it actually meant part of what is built in and is required for federal reporting is a growth factor, is a change over time factor. So we must do that. It's required as part of our, our federal state plan. And so because we couldn't use the 2020 data, there was no 2020 data, we had to actually open back up our contract with our vendor for the report card and the underlying system behind it and actually make some changes to it, some pretty substantial. behind it and actually make some changes to it, some pretty substantial changes for a one-time fix to be able to do that again to meet federal compliance. So, it took way longer than I would have liked. I wasn't, you know, I kind of inherited this when I stepped into the acting role. And I moved very quickly to secure some funding for this additional work, which had not been anticipated in terms of a funding stream. So, I'm, you know, I think our, both the vendor, once the decision was made to actually fund this work, and then also, you know, it involves working across digital, our Agency of Digital Services and our data management division. Once that decision of how to fund it got made, and that happened shortly after I moved into the Acting Secretary role, our team, you know, was heroic in terms of really getting the work done. But there definitely had been a long period where the work was stalled. And so, I'm happy that we were able to get back on track, but we still are. So typically, you're right, the previous spring's data would come out in the fall/winter. So, we're a little behind in that because we're now, you know, at the end of September, but we're going to try our very best to have it at the beginning of the winter, which we've had some other years too, I will say, for different reasons. So, sometimes we've had to delay because we've had some districts that were really struggling to get their data in, and the kind of system we have is it's all in or none, which is tough. It's really a hard prospect. And I have to credit our LEAs because they've really beefed up their local processes because that really doesn't happen all that much anymore. Does that answer your question, Kim?
I think so, yeah. And I am wondering, just, I think you're going to be able to just confirm that now we've met the federal requirement, and I guess the question I have, if there's a federal requirement for what must be reported, is there a timeline within which it must be reported?
You know, there isn't, which is kind of interesting. So, they don't, they don't have an annual deadline by which the report card must be updated or must be reported. We've been very careful in looking at that. So, I think, I think the USDA gets very nervous if, you know, you're talking about not having it posted for, you know, over a year.
Which is what this is, right? Like, I mean, we're over a year out from the completion of the year.
Yeah.
And then, in hearing you regarding the comparison and then thinking about the one-time fix, when we are changing our assessment system, are we going to run into the same problem drawing those comparisons for reporting out 23 data as it relates to 22 data from a different system? I know that question was asked and answered in a slightly different way, but in relation to being able to report data.
Yeah, so, no, because the data, so, the question Lyle had was about, like, do the data speak to each other? Like, is there a way to have, like, Sback data be co-examined, if you will, with the new Cognia data system? So, that's a separate issue. This concern was more about the mechanics of how suppression is actually performed, how change scores are calculated regardless of what the assessment is. So, that's what the holdup was and the delay was for this. It's a lot more, it's a different kind of technical. It's more the practicality of actually making the calculations, which is different than the question of, okay, once you know the calculations, do the calculations make sense because you had an apple and an orange?
Okay.
Meaning the two different assessment systems.
I think, I think, I think that's it. I thought I might have had another, but I, I'll throw it to Tammy if that's okay with Jen. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Tammy?
Secretary, two related questions on things I didn't hear you mention that I think are relevant to this. One, and I don't want to scrape a scab here, but the rollout of Cognia wasn't all, there were some bumps in the road.
Absolutely.
And so, there are lots of different sources of measurement error. You know, one is obviously scaling across years. That's, and that's sort of what we're talking about here. But I think there also are some concerns with measurement error for this past year due to, I would call it, sort of startup fits and starts and bumps in the road and things along those lines. I haven't heard anything from the agency, and I haven't seen anything from Cognia that's going to, that talks about, are there going to be any intentional attempts to adjust or account for that? Because that bias that is in those results is systematic and will, in particular, probably, I would think, based on my understanding, systematically bias scores for some of the more marginalized communities, right? So, that would be my first question. I have a second question. I don't know if you want to answer that one first, then give you my second question?
Sure, sure. So, yeah, this is a very serious concern of us at the agency as well. And so, we have already surveyed the field to find out sort of what worked, what didn't. We kind of knew that, but we wanted to do a more targeted approach to that. Happy to share that information if that would be useful for the board. This was a big current concern for mine very early on because we knew that the, there was a very truncated approach, a very truncated timeline, excuse me, for ensuring that the field was ready. So, when I stepped in, I immediately was concerned about this. And one of my big concerns, just given my background, was the issue of, are these assessment data even going to be remotely reliable? So, you know, and really challenged Cognia about that. And they assured us that, that they actually, the way they've actually structured the assessment tests and the way they've actually randomly assigned, randomly assigned items, that they are at the item level going to be reliable. I still think the question of particular groups of students and, you know, I think it's a different question to say if reliable.
Yeah, the issue isn't item reliability, the issue is generalizability, right?
Exactly.
And so.
Yeah. So, we will continue to look at that, though. Like, we're not, you know, and, you know, I envision that there would be a fair amount, just like I'm talking about with the previous years, there's going to have to be a fair amount of caveating of this year's data as a result of that as well.
I might encourage, and I know the agency has lots on its plate, so maybe this encouragement is passed along to Cognia. I would encourage, there should be a systematic examination of respondents versus non-respondents here, right? And we can do that based on estimated, based on student population characteristics, right? We should be able to know sort of what, where the coverage problems were and be able to talk about their, and they're systematic and based in this effort to sort of scale across years, that has to be taken into account.
That this year, right, the whole implementation.
Right, it has to be taken into account. And so, it has to be, so, I think it's more than just caveating. I think that in reporting for any one year, that sort of additional analysis or additional context, right, that talks about where the systematic difference, where the problems were systematic, right, needs to be described. And then in any calculation, such an attempt to trend these things over year, year by year, and when we try, right, when we try to equivocate the two scores from the Sback and what's coming out of Cognia, that has to be explicitly, not just taken into account, but explained. Because if you think about it, especially when we're trying to calibrate across years, right, like, the precision on those estimates, particularly for small subgroups, are going to be problematic. So, that would just be one thing. And so, I would encourage the agency, which I assume is going to encourage in Cognia, like, I don't know how we report those data without having that supplemental analysis, and the field should demand that. And then the second thing I didn't hear you mention, and I remember this from my meetings with AOE and around the Cognia contract, is there were supposed to be additional efforts, I guess, one of the selling points of Cognia was their ability to do alternative assessments for students with disabilities better, right? And there were supposed to be special modules and things along those lines. I haven't heard anything about that. Were they deployed during the first iteration of testing? And if so, how did it go? And what are the implications? If it did happen, what are the implications for tracking sort of scores for students with disabilities, particularly those who are taking alternative assessments? And I raised that knowing sort of some of the scrutiny the state is under right now by OSHA around these issues.
Yeah, so the alternative assessment is completely separate from this assessment, so that's important to note. So, what I'm talking about today is just the overall assessment. There are many students who are eligible and are on IEPs who take the regular assessment. I know that there were some challenges with some of the text-to-speech components of the new assessment, and that's something that we're definitely going to be taking a close look at. And also, of course, we want to make sure that, you know, the extent to which that actually affected, affected the assessment itself. So, I think, I think all of these are good questions that we're actively looking into, and I'm happy to come back and have a much more focused conversation about reliability, generalizability, validity. I think that's, I think it's really important, including perhaps bringing, you know, we can actually have Ask Cognia to come and talk about what they're, what they're doing, and then we can also talk about what we're doing as an agency to kind of together make sure that we can be confident, as confident as we can be.
Yeah, I know, I know the agencies on top of trying to think through some of the operational issues, but some of these measurement issues are, I think, less well-understood in the general public. And yet, when those scores come out, it, you know, they fundamentally, right, impact what people see. So, you know, the extent to which there can be sort of this supplemental work, I think that's essential, even though it may not have been in their original contract. I think because some of the operations issues fall at their feet, that additional analysis has to be done and transparent to the public about what, how that influences the scores that they're seeing and what that means for trends over time. And I would be very interested to just, if you, as you can, keep us updated on the alternative assessment, because that really was one of the selling points of Cognia, or at least they put that forward. And that's an area, not just Vermont, but other states struggle, and we need to make sure that we're staying on top of that.
Just one piece, I know it sounds like, Jennifer, we need to move on, because it seemed like you were going to jump in. We did make a real concerted, make a decision, and it was really important that we actually got out some template communications for the field to use this year when the report card was updated to really assist just in that issue, which you were talking about, Tammy, which is how, how can parents, how can families make sense of this? And so, we knew that it was really important to help the LEAs have that conversation with their communities. And so, we did put together some templates to help them have that conversation and help them, even though this is a really complicated, very technical space, how to actually have open, honest conversation with their communities around what these mean. Happy to share those as well with the board.
All right. Thank you so much, Heather and board members. Those were really good questions, and I'm sure we will continue this conversation in the future. So, with that, I'm going to move on to independent school approvals. And Tom, I'm going to turn it over to you. It looks like we've got one for the board's consideration today.
We do. So, I'll begin by making the motion that the State Board of Education grants renewal of therapeutic independent school approval to, to serve students in grades K through eight and grants an amendment to add a high school program to Community Schoolhouse of Brattleboro, Vermont, to serve students in grades nine through 12. This approval will be for five years through June 30, 2028. And this approval is conditional on the requirement that the school reports to the Agency of Education within five business days, whenever any changes occur in enrollment programs, policies, facilities, financial capacity, staffing or administration during the approval period. And let me just tell you a little bit about the Community Schoolhouse. It's a K through eight therapeutic school that is seeking to add a high school. It's located in residential neighborhood in Brattleboro with two buildings for their day school and one for a residential, short-term residential program. They also have a care house for larger group activities and an outdoor space. They'll be adding a high school and a professional office building on Linden Street in Brattleboro that will have four classrooms, five breakout rooms, and a library or reading area. They're currently approved to serve 30 students in their day school and six in their residential facility, which is licensed with DCF. They serve students who have experienced significant adverse experiences. And at the time of the visit, there were eight students from Vermont and 13 students from New Hampshire and four students in their residential programs placed by the LEA. Agency staff described the school as a well-oiled machine. The LEAs have been asking that they add a high school, so the high school is badly needed in the area. The school offers a safe and structured environment, building up students' self-esteem and sense of control, and seeking to return them to their sending schools as soon as possible. Students do not graduate from Community Schoolhouse, they graduate from their sending schools. They're operated by a 501(c)(3) organization called Community House, and it's run by a Board of Directors. Right now, there are currently five. They teach students using a variety of instructional methods, and the curriculum is varied by age. It meets the minimum course of study according to the agency staff, and the high school, the plans for the high school do as well. It's aligned with the Common Core and graduation, standard graduation requirements. Professional staff all met the qualifications required by statute. There are three classroom teachers licensed in the special education, six total special education staff, a social worker, a reading specialist, an outdoor education instructor. And the high school will be staffed by three teachers, all of whom also have the needed qualifications. The HC staff looked at all the assurances that schools need to, with which schools need to comply, and Community Schoolhouse met all of the assurances. So, that, that's the school, and that's the motion that our committee would like to bring before the full board.
All right, thank you, Tom. So, board members, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
I would second it.
Seconded by Lyle. Is there any discussion?
I would add, and I think Tom said it in his comments, but that the LEAs are supporting this request, and they see it, and as I was hearing it, they see it as a part of their continuum of care for and service for the students in their region, and so, they are very supportive.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion as read by Tom, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Are there any abstentions? Okay, hearing none. Excuse me, the motion has approved, has been approved unanimously. Thank you, Tom, and thank you to the committee and to the agency for your hard work on this. Okay, so, Tammy, I'm going to turn this over to you. This is the Act One presentation, and I think we have Amanda with us. But before we turn to Amanda, I'm going to let Tammy do the introductions.
Great. Can we just confirm that we do have Amanda? I can't see for sure. Amanda, are you here? I'll do an introduction.
I am not allowed to use my camera for some reason.
Okay, all right. I'm going to do a quick introduction and then turn it over to you, but I just wanted to make sure that you were available, so.
Let me just ask that maybe while you're doing the introduction, Tammy, Maureen, and Suzanne, if you can work to help enable Amanda's camera, that'd be great.
Great, great, great. Great, great, great. Okay, so I thought it might be helpful if we stood back and talked a little bit about the big picture for what Amanda, it sounds like Natasha and Mike are gonna share today, and sort of orient the board to the discussion. So, as a reminder, the Act One directed, the Act One Working Group, well, it constituted the Act Working Group, but it also directed the Working Group to review the standards for student performance adopted by the State Board of Education under 16 VSA 164-9. And then recommend to the State Board updates and any additional standards that would allow us to allow, sort of, that will recognize the fully, the history, contributions, and perspectives of ethnic groups and social groups. And specifically, Act One requires the recommended additional standards to do a few things. And I think it's important just to kind of keep in mind what those things are. One, increase cultural competency of students in pre-K through 12, increase the attention to the history contribution and perspective of ethnic groups and social groups. Three, promote critical thinking regarding history contributions and perspectives of ethnic and social groups. Four, commit the school, commit the, commit schools to eradicating any racial bias in their curricula. Five, provide cross-curricula content methods, content methods, and enable students to explore safely questions of identity, race, equality, racism. Then also ensure that the basic curriculum and extracurricular programs are welcoming to all students and take into account parental concerns about religion or culture. So the State Board is, under 164-9, has responsibility for adopt, right, for considering and adopting standards generally. And so on July 30th of this past year, 2023, the Act One Working Group submitted a proposed framework to us for ethnic study standards for the State Board's consideration. And our job, and Act One directs us to do so, is to consider adopting ethnic and social equity standards into the broader range of standards of performance that are already approved and in place, approved by the board and in place for the state under 16 VSA 164-9. So we've been asked to consider these standards and take, and when, when we do that, we've been asked to take into account, again, take into account, a report submitted by the Working Group, and that's the report that was received on June 30th. So today, we're going to hear very briefly from the Chair of the Act One Working Group, and I think Natasha and Mike are with Amanda today, about the group's recommendations for a framework that can be used to develop standards of performance for ethnic and social equity studies. And to be clear, there are a lot of different terms flying around here, and I want to be clear. What they've proposed is framework for standards of performance. This is not a recommended curriculum. We don't have statewide curricula in Vermont. And so the board, again, our responsibility is, under statute, and that's 164-9, is to identify and adopt standards that are, that are in place for the state. And we've been asked by Act One to consider adopting standards for ethnic and social equity studies. And one of the sources of information for us to consider in that process is the report that the Act One Working Group is providing us. And that report includes a framework for us to consider. So I'm gonna turn it over to Amanda. I thought, there's just a lot of moving pieces with this. I thought a little bit of background might be helpful for the State Board about sort of what our role is, what we're, what the Act One Group has to do, what are, what we're asked to do, and, and sort of what would, what might, sort of the context in which we need to consider what's being brought to the board. So, let me start there.
Like, this is, this is kind of launching this aspect of the board's work, so it's really, you know, the presentation from Amanda and Mike and Natasha to, you know, ground the next steps that the board will undertake. Thank you all for joining us today.
Thank you so much. So I just want to start by introducing, well, I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, Natasha and Mike, members of the Working Group, and then I'll go and start. Natasha, you wanna start?
Sure. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
I never use Microsoft Teams, so bear with me. Um, so my name's Natasha Eckhart. I am the Vermont NEA representative on the Working Group. But I also wanted to just share some other hats that I wear. I am on the school board for Washington Central School District. I'm a parent. I grew up in Vermont and attended Vermont School. And I'm also a former educator. So when I was asked to be a part of this work, I was really excited because it kind of covers all the different aspects of who I am, and also is gonna directly positively impact my student, my children, and what their educational community and culture is gonna.
Mike?
Thanks, Amanda. Good morning, everyone. Michael Martin. I serve as the Executive Director of the Roland Foundation. And prior to this, I've been a longtime classroom teacher. I worked as a classroom teacher in Vermont for 18 years altogether, and then as an administrator, a curriculum director more specifically in Montpelier for Montpelier Public Schools at the time, and in South Burlington School District. And I serve on that Act One Working Group as the representative from the Vermont Curriculum Leaders Association. It's good to be with you.
Great. And my name is Amanda Garcés. I am the Director of Policy, Education, and Outreach for the Vermont Human Rights Commission. And I'm also the Chair of Act One. I also want to acknowledge that Secretary Bush is here, who also is part of the Working Group, so she knows intimately this work as well. I am also a one of color Latina, have kids in the school district, serve as the school board member in Montpelier for a year. And I also serve on the Vermont Standards Board of Educators. So that's all the hats that I wear. So we'll start really quick. If I can share my screen. Oh, no, I don't wanna show you my, no. And so I think that Tammy went over this slide, which is what our job was. And so she already read that, so I'm not gonna go over. And this is the wrong computer. And this, she already mentioned, which is what the Act directs the State Board to do. So I'm gonna, so I'm gonna turn it over to Natasha to kind of start us up with this.
Thanks, Amanda. Um, there's a lot of words in here, because there's a lot of information, so I'm just gonna be trying to give you kind of a basic overview as we go through each of these. Some of the slides I will read some things directly from, because I think it's important. So "In pursuit of transformative solidarity, Vermont offers an ethnic study standards framework that draws on the iris as a series of metaphors and as an acronym." So I'll be kind of going over what the iris framework looks like in terms of the standards. So, just to give you an idea of what transformative solidarity is, it recognizes that all movements toward freedom are interconnected and requires deep and sustained relationships based on mutual respect, healing, and willingness to work together to take action to change oppressive systems. And I think of it as also moving from thinking about yourself to moving to thinking about how yourself interacts with the broader society. Go ahead, Amanda. Okay, so the iris was chosen to kind of be the symbol for the framework. Part of the reason is because it is an indigenous flower to Vermont. Three petals represent wisdom, faith, and courage. I think of this in terms of how do we draw on the wisdom of our elders to get us moving forward in a different direction, and then giving us the courage to be able to do that work and sustain that work.
And I also just to add that for us, that's what the root of the Act One is. It's like, who brought us here and who created Act One was really a coalition of elders, it was and youth coming together to say, we need a little more from our state. And that is who created this. And this is kind of giving honor to all those people who have been you know, living with racial injustice in our state and how, like, we are, like, they brought this here. So I just want to honor all of our elders who have fought for, for justice here.
And then there's two other pieces of the iris that we just wanted to, to pull out. One is the iris as a flower is a symbol of healing. And then also the other way to look at the iris is as a part of the I. And so the iris also helps to bring us some perspective on how to do this work moving forward.
And the beautiful thing about the iris is that it was serendipitous. The Clements Family Farm actually has a weekend where they have this beautiful iris field where people come together and learn about African culture, but also just enjoy the beauty of the iris. And it happened that when the, the people who helped us with this, our consultants, were asked by one of our members that we really needed to have an acronym to support teachers in their thinking so they didn't forget. That's what she came out with. And then three days later, I got an email from the Clements Family Farm, totally disconnected. I just want to throw that in there, because I think it's very beautiful. And so next year, you should really go to see the Clements Family Farm iris.
And also, just, I wanted to piggyback on, on something Amanda said about the elders and in the culture that comes out of the state of Vermont. I had mentioned that I went to school here. I'm a black woman who was adopted by white parents and was raised in Vermont. And I loved being raised in Vermont. And I left for 12 years and lived in Baltimore and chose to come back to Vermont, because I wanted to raise my kids here. But when I came back to Vermont, I realized it wasn't the state that I thought it was when I was growing up. And, and so this idea of wisdom and faith and courage really speaks to me, because I believe very strongly of what the state of Vermont can be, and what I think Vermonters want to be when we think of Vermont. And so I feel like this framework very much aligns with how do we get our educational system and our state to a place that truly is what we want it to represent us as? So it's, it's something that speaks very near and dear to me, because I want my children to grow up in a state and love this state as much as I did growing up, but be able to grow up and love this state without having to assimilate and not be able to honor the culture that they come from. So we're gonna get into what iris stands for. And this first part is about centering students. So each letter does stand for a different piece. I stands for identity development, R is for resisting racism, I is for interconnectedness, and S is for social responsibility. And when I think about this framework, I really feel like it's moving education from just the acquisition of education to the application of education. And it's moving the education of students from being passive to being active, which is what I really appreciate, appreciated about it. I really feel like this is asking our students to really be a part of their own education and, and do something with it, and make change, not with just themselves or their classroom or their school, but with the broader community as a whole. So, identity. How I kind of looked at it as, what is your sense of self? But not only what is your sense of self, but how does it connect to other ethnic study groups? And the piece that I think is really important here is the idea of sharing lived experiences and using storytelling as a way to build empathy and humanity within our students, so that they can move from looking at education as sort of a self-piece to how do I interact with my peers, my culture, my school, my society? With the resisting racism, this is the ability to understand and change the impact of racism and other forms of oppression. So this is really about examining what has been happening, disrupting racism when you see it, researching ways that these systems have impacted our lives, and then developing new ways to, to change those systems. And when I read this, I was, I was a STEAM teacher, K through five. So I looked at this and I was like, oh, it's the engineering design process. You know, this is, how are we looking at what we're currently doing? Where are we finding some problems? How are we addressing those problems? How are we tweaking it, and how are we making it better? So the interconnectedness, this is really speaking to valuing cultural wealth and actively building one's purpose to actualize equitable distribution of power. So this is, this is where we're starting to move from the sense of self into the sense of being a part of a community. And how do our actions directly impact other people, but also how can we work to raise everybody up? Right? So that we are all part of a larger society and a larger community, and also helping to change some of the systems that are currently in place. And with the social responsibility, this is really speaking about actively participating and uplifting collective liberation. And a really big part of this I love is the joy, right? So it's, it's gonna be a lot of work, but the work is done so that we can really celebrate the well-being and the joy of everyone who is a part of our community and our society. That's where we want to get to. We want everyone to feel like they belong, that they are valued, and that and so they can be healthy and experience joy. This, it's talking about looking at the impact of social movements. It's looking at social responsibility to address the systems as they are and how we change them. It's about engaging in some of those conversations that could be incredibly difficult. And then also about creating space that centers healing and wellness. So going back to this idea that everybody should be able to exist and feel joy and feel safe and feel healthy. And so how do we look at some of the systems that are currently in place and change those? So that everybody is able to experience the same kind of well-being.
So, aligning with the student standards, we have the pedagogical commitment. So what we're giving you is not just, we could have just given you the standards and say, here's the new ethnic study standards for our state. But we believed wholeheartedly that we needed to build the standards within a framework so that it wasn't, so that it was consistent, so that it kind of aligned with all the other systems that we have in place. And so with that in mind, we also created the pedagogical commitments, which also has the same acronym, IRIS, with identity development, resistant racism. And so this is to support educators in thinking. So the left is your, your, like, for student centers. And the right is, how are educators, how can educators do this with the students? And so you will see in the document kind of the different, like, pieces of it and how it aligns. So the students, as a standard, will identify the contributions. But then here you have a tool for educators to say, this is what it looks like. And Mike, feel free to add anything, since you are the curriculum director. So you, I'm not gonna go over, but you know, this will give educators a tool to be able to say, okay, this is how I'm going to use resistant racism. We're gonna learn how the systems work. What happened with exclusion of these groups in here? What happened with white supremacy? You know, using white supremacy, patriarchy, you know, all the things. So, like, for the educators to, to think about the tools that they need. And so that will go into some, so you'll see the beauty of, of, of this. Interconnect is, is like one of my favorite ones, because it's learning with students and families. Remember that this is all very aligned with education quality standards as well. So we're borrowing from the educator, educator, education quality standards that hopefully you'll be voting in December to, like, align this with them. So how interconnected is we can learn by students, families, and communities of color who come from generations of peoples who have the intellectual and cultural tradition? who come from generations of peoples who have the intellectual and cultural tradition? Michael's having the Roland Foundation Conference next month, or yeah, next month. And we have a workshop with two students who are going to be showing us how like we could use this. And they're going to be using storytelling to show the connection between the EQS and how like we use that. And they're going to share their magic. So there's a lot of ways to be able to connect the students with educators within the classroom. And again, with social responsibility, I'm not going to read all of it, but you you see the point of the these two sides of it. Michael, do you want to add something to the pedagogical commitments?
Sure, I'd be glad to. Thanks. One thing that I think Amanda wanted to mention is, I think this was your idea, Amanda, is the color coding here of these slides where on the left you see, right, this this violet color Iris, but the right is supposed to, with the pedagogical commitments from the schools, that's supposed to be the rich soil, right, that these that this learning will grow from. So there's some, again, some staying in the metaphor and extending that symbolism. Otherwise, if I could just mention a couple of, like, from a curriculum director's standpoint, where this sort of fits. I really appreciated Tammy's excellent introduction to to frame the work. And especially once you said, you know, this isn't a curriculum, this is a framework of standards. And so to me, and something that seems to be coming up with some of the work around anti-racism in Vermont schools, is there seems to be a gap from like very specific, high-quality, sort of sometimes one-off resources that don't, again, fit into a curriculum or a framework of standards or like professional learning around anti-racism, which is very broad, like 30,000 feet. And so I think this framework really fits in between those things and establishes an approach that's coherent, that's well-thought-out. And it's also been been brought to us from people of color, from Vermonters of color, saying, this is what we need our schools to do. So as it relates to the pedagogical commitments and the structure of the framework, right, there are these four with Iris, you have these four domains. Under each domain, you have four competencies. And then for each of these competencies, which are a little finer grain, you have a pedagogical commitment. The idea being that we can't expect students to just all of a sudden overnight be showing these competencies until our school communities make these commitments to do the to to engage with these pedagogical commitments. And so I think that that this is really useful for schools that are thinking about, you know, developing an ethnic studies course or a sequence of courses, they could draw on this framework. But also, it's intended to be used across the curriculum. So as Natasha said, like, if you're a STEAM teacher or if you're a social studies teacher or a math teacher, you can be drawing on this framework to then develop the curriculum underneath and in greater detail around instruction and assessment, but be still be guided by the Iris framework. So the, I guess, the last thing that I would add is just talking with with teachers and school leaders in the field very often, we could really use something like this. We could really use an inspiring, aspirational framework like this that it the focus that centers healing and joy and solidarity. In this moment, coming through, you know, the the earlier conversation on how difficult it's been coming through COVID and the pandemic with schools and the impact on schools, to have something that really acknowledges the wider community and makes those connections and this idea that we're all in this together and we need to look out for each other is really, to me, an inspiring proposition. So thanks.
Thank you, Michael. So sad that we only had 15 minutes, but so just the 30,000-foot process that we had, Act 66, no, some other act, I forget which one, the miscellaneous bill, and gave us some money to hire consultants. We knew that we needed the support. We had a process to, we had an RFP with the Agency of Education did. We had a few failed attempts of people that didn't do it. But then the the last time, we did have some bids. We had a working a subgroup that did the pairing down. And then we had a whole decision for the working group to decide in our contractor. So in the report and the report narrative we sent you has the names, how how it is. And also, because we only had six months from January to June with our consultants, what we did was create a small working group. That was what we called the writing team. And so that was Michael, that was Cynthia Reyes from UVM, Mark H., works at the NEA, has been our co-chair and amazing writer. So and myself, and the four of us met periodically with our consultants to write. We also had a lot of feedback from working group members through the process. We shifted some of the ways that we were doing the work to get us to where we are. And because we only had six months, we didn't do the full community engagement that we did with the education quality standards. But we did draw upon our working group members. The working group members went back to their communities. And then we also drew for some people in the field that we, you know, are trusted kind of leaders who are doing this work to give us feedback. You receive a document with a lot of the feedback that that we got. But like we said in the report, you know, I I think this this will, we will hope that if you do have a subcommittee that you do engage with some more public comment to help us with this. So that is, in short, what I have to say, I just want to say that I am incredibly proud of this work, that this is really guidance from people of color, LGBTQ, and our disability rights advocates that really put their heart into this. So I really hope that your consideration is really taken full consideration and to honor the voices who are giving you this. You know, this is not just some, this is really, really impactful because you're bringing together educators with communities who have been asking us to do something great for them. So I hope that this brings you joy as it brought this for us and that you do it, the justice that we're hoping it gives. And with that, I think I open up for questions.
We're not going to take questions today, Amanda. We're going to just move, just given the time constraints. So I thank you all. It's always, it does bring me joy. I think it brings all of us joy. And I I'm always really just so encouraged by the good work done by the Act One group. And I I know that this is really hard work and I really appreciate Natasha and Mike and Amanda. I know you've got, all of you have put a lot of your heart and soul into it, so thank you for that and thanks for the presentation. So we have some process things as a board we need to do now. And again, so we have now received, right, this framework from the Act One Working Group. We've had a had a great presentation that gives us sort of the overview of that. And so now we need to sort of initiate our process for considering this, right? And so what we'd like to do now is suggest to the full board that that the task of consideration, at least initially, and sort of this process of taking public input and thinking through how this framework aligns with the EQS, that process would be delegated to the EQS Subcommittee, which has been deeply involved in this body of work and working closely with the Act One Group and AOE and others over the past year. So with that in mind, I think, Jennifer, you have a motion that for the board to consider?
Yeah, and let me just tack on Amanda, Mike, and Natasha. Thank you very much for your presentation this morning. Thank you for coming to join the board. And it's clear to me, as I've read the framework and the comments and the feedback, there's been a lot of thought and love that has gone into creating this. So I look forward to taking this up, but just wanted to acknowledge the work that you guys have done and thank you for it. So at this point, I move that the State Board of Education establish a committee to review the Ethnic Studies Standards Framework submitted to it by the Act One Working Group on July 3, 2023. Is there a second?
So the motion, the motion, yeah, okay, so do we have a, do we have a second? Kim has seconded. Any discussion of that motion among the board?
Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting or approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Are there any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
So thank you, everyone. The EQS Committee will will get to work on this. I also just wanted to.
Tammy, we have another motion.
Oh, that's right. That's the second motion. Right, like, oh, we voted, we should move on.
I further move that the State Board of Education authorize its chair to appoint members to the Ethnic Studies Standards Framework Committee. Is there a second?
Kim, go, it's in seconds.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion has been approved unanimously. And as Tammy mentioned, this work will be taken up in the first instance by the EQS Committee, which is co-chaired by Tammy and Kim and is also joined by Mohammed, Rich, and Gray. So I think the next steps will be for the committee to figure out when to meet. And I'm sure that Amanda will be invited back in to speak in more detail.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And in my thanks, I just wanted also, I acknowledge Cynthia Reyes's work in this. She's a good friend and colleague. I know she also was very invested in this work and and grateful. I know I mentioned the three folks on the on the screen today, but I didn't want to overlook Cynthia's work, who's a professor at UVM. So thank you to Cynthia also for all her time and effort on this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and thanks again for the presentation.
All right, so that brings us to item M, which is our accessibility discussion. So I just wanted to ground this a little bit. I've been on the board for over three years now. And the way that the board is run meetings since I've been the chair is exactly the same as how at least the last two prior chairs ran their meetings. Until our August 18 special meeting, no one had ever raised the issue of accessibility to the board. This feedback was really helpful, is this is an important issue. And obviously, we want to better ourselves where we can do better. Since the issue was first raised last month, I've elevated the issue on two fronts. First, I've been in communication with the agency to see if there were any quick changes that we could implement. Because, as you know, we rely on the agency for support for everything that the board does, from morning meetings, posting the agenda packets, performing accessibility checks, taking our minutes, and running our meetings for us. We do not direct the agency, nor can we direct the agency. So any changes to our practices must also be feasible from the agency's perspective. So that was the first front. I learned in conversations that the agency could fairly easily provide a Teams link to our meetings and that Maureen and Suzanne were both willing to co-run our meetings. Up until this point, Maureen and Suzanne have taken turns and sort of alternated on and off. But with a Teams link, it does require both of them to attend and help run our meetings. So I just wanted to point out that, you know, the agency was able to pivot very quickly to provide us with the support. And I wanted to thank Heather and Maureen and Suzanne for their willingness to jump in and help us so quickly. The second thing that I did was to speak with the governor's office because although the issue was first raised before the State Board of Education, it is not not unique to the State Board of Education. What I've learned is that the way that we have been running our meetings is in line with how other organizations and commissions have been running their meetings. So what this really points to is a statewide issue that will require a statewide solution. And really, the enhancements to accessibility need to be addressed in a universal way throughout the state. So to that end, I'm just letting the board know that Tammy and I will be meeting with Heather and other members of the agency team. We'll be meeting with Susanna Davis and Jay Green from the Office of Racial Equity to explore the issues of accessibility, both from a global standpoint, because this is something that will affect other agencies and boards as well. And also, from the standpoint of exploring options in partnership with the agency, since by law, they are the ones who support us. So since this issue was first raised last month, this is the first time that we have met together. And of course, we can only act in open meeting. So I'm just letting the board know the steps that have been taken, the plan going forward. And I'm happy to take any questions or comments. Tammy?
So I, you know, I think the points that you make are well-taken, right? Like, the issues of accessibility are very, very important and something we should all be taking seriously. And I think everybody on this, I see on my screen, is nodding along with me, either visibly or in their heads, right? Like, this is an important issue. And I think you are exactly right, that this issue is not isolated. Sort of issues of accessibility are is not an isolated issue when it comes to the Vermont State Board of Education. And that, you know, we should be encouraging the state to think about this in a more global way to address across all the boards and all of our agency activities. I did note yesterday that there was an article on Vermont Public Radio that by a journalist who sort of singled this out as a state board issue. And I think certainly that makes sense, like, you know, there were concerns raised. I do want to say publicly, though, that, you know, the article seemed to imply that our chair, Jennifer Samuelson, somehow was was doing something inappropriate here. And that is just not the case. The entire board has been committed to this issue. We're working hard with the agency and the governor's office to try to rectify this. This is not anything the chair has done. As she noted, this is practice that has been in place by the state board. And we should always be reviewing and reflecting on our practice. We can always do better. And I'm looking forward to having conversations about how we can do better. But it is an issue that's universal across the state. It's not unique to the state board. And it certainly is not something that I think we should be pinning on the back of our chair here. I think, you know, it's something we all need to attend to. So I don't usually speak out like that, but I want to just be public and just sort of share my public reaction to that article that I thought it was more of a personal attack. And I I don't, I don't feel good about that because I think we all work hard on this issue. And I think our chair has worked very hard and has been transparent in her efforts. And this is the first time as a group we've had a chance to sort of reflect on that. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Gray?
I just wanted to say, I had listened to that article on VPR, and I do think it was really overly harsh personally. But one thing it did mention was it talked about language barriers in terms of accessibility. And I I have no idea what we do about that currently or what we can do about that. But that was the the one thing there that I did find interesting because it said that it's hard to have any idea of what's going on for people that don't speak English. And I don't know if there's anything in place about that, but I assume there could be for lots of those things.
So and I, Heather, I know you're with us, and I think maybe Emily is as well. Heather?
Yeah, I I just wanted to echo some of what Chair Samuelson said and and I think just point out that this, we have a deep shared commitment to getting this right. You know, continuous improvement is a core of what we do at the agency. And I think I just wanted to note that we're looking forward to to addressing the concerns that were raised in partnership with the board. And I just wanted to note that publicly, that we're we're on the same page.
Thank you. Heather, do you have any, you know, with regard to Gray's question about language accessibility? I mean, I don't, I don't know if you have an answer, and maybe this is something that we need to discuss with the Office of Racial Equity, but, you know.
Yeah, I I think.
The agency manages our webpage, so.
Sure. I think I think that I'm looking forward to the Office of Racial Equity discussion because I think there are different gradations of, you know, there's, there's a continuum of what you can do. So at one end, you can use something as relatively crude or simplistic as Google Translator. But I think that there are a lot of problems with that approach in the sense that I think it's not always accurate or there are some. in the sense that I think it's not always accurate or there are some concerns. That's what I've heard. So what I can say is that we're committed to doing our very best to make sure that, that multiple languages are attended to in our materials, both in terms of the board and then the agency. But I think we need to actually speak a little bit more with the experts at the ORE to get a sense of like what the different options are. It's a great question.
Gray, I think it's a great example, right? Of how we can start to think about doing better. And, you know, these are issues that continue to evolve and the technology continues to evolve. And I think we just have to, you know, I keep saying, but I think we just need to be reflective in our practices and say, here we are and this is good feedback. You know, I think feedback's always good. So we should take the feedback, build on it, reflect on it. I think we should do what was practicable with the technology that we have at hand and figure out how we can, you know, not just revise our practices. But again, I think this is a universal issue around the state. I think certainly state board meetings should be accessible to individuals who speak languages other than English. But that's not just the State Board of Education. That should be other venues, right? And so, you know, we're looking forward to talking with, continuing conversation. And again, I think this is, what's, what's important about this moment is that it's given sort of us a chance to elevate this as an issue around, for consider, more broader consideration. And that, I think that's, I think that's a really good outcome that's coming out of this.
Yeah, I think it is a nice opportunity for the board to really, you know, take the first steps in this direction to improving accessibility across the state. Any other comments or questions? All right, well, thank you guys. So this brings us to future meeting planning. So I'll just throw this out there. We had talked about having in-person meetings sort of periodically. And it's a little bit of a balance. I mean, on the issue of accessibility, our meetings are actually more accessible in terms of people being able to attend our meetings virtually when we have them online. Because people can sort of pop in and pop out. And there's no barrier in terms of having to drive to get to a meeting or weather conditions or anything like that. But at the same time, I think it is important for us to meet in person and, you know, have that opportunity to get together as a group. That said, I'm just forecasting in the spring. I think it would be great to visit Aleah at her school. So I'm not going to do that in the fall. And if anyone has any good suggestions about a meeting location for either our October meeting and/or our November meeting, please just email me and let me know. Because I'm really just looking for good suggestions. And if we don't get any, then we will just meet virtually and we will focus on meeting in person in the spring. So it's really, if, if anyone has a great idea, please let me know. I think at our next meeting, the things that I have on my list that I know of, there may be a potential update from the Special Education Advisory Panel. Katie Ballard is coming in roughly quarterly to meet with the board. So we can check in with her and see if she's ready to present anything. Maybe an Act one seventy-three follow-up with AOE Fiscal Staff. Because I think that had to get pushed off. Independent school approvals. Their independent school compliance with changes to the Rule Series twenty-two hundred that became effective on July first. And then I'm sure we will have updates from the EQS Committee, the twenty-two hundred Committee and the Secretary Search Committee. Anything else the board members can think of? All right.
If I could, I just want to put a pin in. If we're talking about October and November, we may be coming back. The EQS Subcommittee may be coming back in November with, not necessarily for a vote, but an overview of any changes that were made as a result of public comment. It certainly wouldn't happen by the October meeting. But given sort of where, what we saw in the first meeting, it may be that we don't have a lot of comment to resolve. And so we may have a draft for the board to just can start to consider an updated draft for the board to consider at the November meeting.
Okay. Any other? Oh, Kim?
And I'm just gonna say, we may not be able to judge one from the other given time of day and day of the week. But I think we also had a fairly extensive public comment window in our development of the draft that the board had approved. So I don't, I'm gonna hope that even should we have little feedback, it's because people feel they had opportunity to bring voice to the process earlier, not for lack of interest in the process. So I would, I would say that would be terrific should we be able to offer you something for deep consideration in November and be prepared for vote in December.
All right.
Thanks.
All right. So that brings us to our second public comment section and Jessica.
We'll try again, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your patience.
Sorry, no camera. But so thank you for your patience. I am here to speak on the behalf of the Jewish Communities of Vermont. We thank you all for all of your work on ethnic studies, important work which JCVT fully supports. JCVT has submitted a letter concerning the working groups draft frameworks. Our comments in that letter reflect our interest in making sure that the frameworks before you this morning meet the needs of all students and comply with the Act One legislation. Specifically, JCVT has consistently advocated that the definition of ethnic groups in the standards and now in the frameworks to be exactly as it appears in the Act One law. In Act One, ethnic groups intentionally includes Part B, groups that have been historically subject to persecution or genocide. Vermont legislators included Part B because it wants Vermont K-12 students to also learn about the cultures, contributions and struggles of groups, including Jews who have been historically subjected to persecution and genocide. This aligns with the White House's recent, first in US history, national strategy to counter antisemitism. However, in both the standards and the frameworks, these groups are not included in the definition of ethnic groups. Instead, genocide and persecution, not people, are suggested topics for ethnic studies to cover. With this change, the definition of defined groups has been dramatically altered. We believe genocides and persecutions should not be studied as standalone incidents in world history, but rather explorations should include the history, culture, contributions and resilience of the historically victimized groups. We are eager for the SBE to take a look at JCVT's full comments and are available to meet or respond to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Jessica, if you have written comments that you would like to send to Maureen or Suzanne, they will be linked in the minutes.
Great, I will. Thanks so much for your patience.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your tenacity. Any other members of the public who wish to be heard?
Yes.
Yes?
Hello?
Yes.
Hello, I'd like to speak.
Yes, can you identify yourself, please?
Yes, certainly. My name is Amy Hornblasts.
Hi, Amy.
Hi, should I start?
Yes, you may.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Yeah, my name is Amy Hornblasts. I'm a health teacher, have been a health teacher in public schools and private schools in Vermont for over fifteen years. I was actually hired by Tom Lovett, one of your board members there, to teach at the academy for a year. And then for several years, I was directly supervised by Jenna O'Farrell, another member of your board. And so I do have connections with you guys. I've been coming to you since 2020 with a concern. And I'm very, very hopeful to hear that your board is, is really focusing on responding to public comments and addressing concerns that are raised by the public. Because that is exactly what I have been coming to you about since 2020. Because I, I resigned from my position teaching at the St. Johnsbury School District after ten years because of the masking requirements. As a health teacher, I just knew that that would be disastrous for respiration, which is the primary function of the human body. We know that there are OSHA standards that are in place that are not being followed in the schools, certainly to protect staff and students. And one of the primary purposes of the OSHA standards to protect people who have to, you know, wear types N95s or dust masks, is to provide proper supervision, right? To make sure that the staff they are supervising, even if they voluntarily wear one of these protection devices, that they are warned of the hazards and that they are supervised to make sure that if they are having difficulty breathing, experiencing chest pain or stomach pain, tingling, dizziness, skin irritation, that, that these issues are addressed. And what I've been coming to you with is evidence that I've gathered through surveying Vermonters, through an information request from my superintendent's office here in my district. I have evidence, and I'm going to present you with a letter after I finish speaking with you. I'll email it to you with links that shows you exactly the types of harms that Vermonters have been complaining of in Vermont schools all these past three years. And I know many people think that masking is over. And it has been honestly, from my point of view, and many people I speak to, it's been honestly traumatizing to, to be masked and to face these mask requirements. But it's not over. We had a school in Vermont, at least one that was continuing to mask last year, specific classrooms and teachers. And, and now that school, Newark School, has come out with a public statement that they are praising students for not complaining and not asking questions when asked to mask. And, I mean, I think that just perfectly shows us that they are not prepared to properly supervise the use of this, of these health devices. And so we need to have a public conversation. You, your board has, has, I'm sorry, but been refusing to put this on as an agenda item. Local boards have been refusing to put this on as an agenda item. Yet we have parents and students and staff leaving schools complaining of these harms. And so I'm just asking you once again to please, it's all outlined in my letter to you, to please put this on as an agenda item. We need to form a commission, an independent commission, to look at what superintendents and supervisory unions have been receiving for complaints all this time. What have been the practices in classrooms? What have students been told? As a health educator, I'm very concerned about the misconceptions students are getting about hygiene, for example, and just basic things. You know, this, this is disastrous for public health on all levels, physical, mental. And in fact, the governor cited mental health concerns when he asked schools to lift their mask requirements in 2022. So it's about time, I'm sorry, 2021, when he lifted those mask requirements, the recommendation for them. So these are all recommendations. These are all suggestions. None of these things have any legal backing. It is time for the public to be able to weigh in and address these concerns. So thank you so much for your time and I really appreciate your work.
Thank you very much. And yes, please send the letter and we will take a look at it and link it to our minutes.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public who wish to be heard? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Tammy, seconded by Kim. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjourning, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Great, the motion is unanimous. We stand in adjournment. Thank you, everybody, for a productive meeting this morning. Thank you, have a good day.